Appeals, the Town of Orleans to order. The notice was properly posted and includes a hearing on now one application, that is case number 2162. This is the application of the Lower Cape Community Access Television for a special permit as set forth in General Law's 48, Chapter 48, Section 9, and zoning bylaw 164-13, footnote four, and Section 16438. The applicant, Lower Cape Community Access Television, is the prospective purchaser of the property located at the 5 Nance St. Gett Road, Unit 5B, Orleans map number 25, parcel number 81-5. And the applicant proposes and wants permission of a special permit to change the present use of the building from a fitness club and gymnasium to a closed television studio and office. Let the record reflect that the members of the zoning board who are present are myself and Mr. Mulligan, Mr. Cole, Ms. Eckold, Mr. Waugh, and Mr. Taub. Also present is the Building Commissioner of the Town of Orleans, Thomas Evers. We have a forum for the meeting. Has any member of the board had any communication with the applicant attorney, the applicant's agents, which ought to be, which would constitute a conflict of interest or which otherwise ought to be disclosed with the board, to the board? Let the record reflect that I had received an email from Mr. Cunnahan, who is present at the meeting, inquiring into, as to whether zoning Board of Appeals would be intervention was necessary. Or another way of putting it was whether the, what was the procedure to endorse a change of use from the gym to the applicant's suggestion? I mentioned to, I spoke in general terms with Mr. Cunnahan, and this was, I think, before the application was filed, and I suggested to him that the gatekeeper in zoning questions is the Building Commissioner of the town, and communication ought to be with Mr. Evers and an application to the, depending on Mr. Evers' ruling and whether the Lower Cape was pleased or displeased with that, you may end up with a hearing at the zoning board. Otherwise, I've had no other communication. I think that I can remain fair and impartial in view of that disclosure, subject to the being overruled in that determination by you, my colleagues. Very well, then I will continue to preside at this hearing. Otherwise, there's no positive response concerning any conflict of interest to be disclosed to the board or to the town. So who speaks for Lower? Oh, we have six members of the zoning board. The following members will decide. All members may inquire, which is our usual practice. Mr. Mulligan, Mr. Cole, Ms. Eckold, and Mr. Waugh. Who's speaking for Lower Cape Community Access Television?
Start off, Mr. Chairman, David Nunnheimer.
Very well, you may proceed.
So, Mr. Chairman, members, this is an application, obviously, for a special permit for the property at 5 Nance St. Gett Road in the corner of Charles Holmstead. It was formerly a Fitness Revolution business. It's approximately 15,000 square feet. And Lower Cape TV, who brings local programming and news and other special programming to town, to the five Cape towns in the Lower Cape, I'm sorry, the Upper Cape, the Lower Cape, to address the high demand for news and other programming that they have. They have health programming, they have cooking programming. They are currently housed at the Norset Regional High School, and that space has become somewhat inadequate. This space will allow them to expand their offerings, both regionally and to other nonprofits on a production sense. It's all local programming. It's going to provide educational and vocational opportunities. The office is expected to be operational Monday through Saturdays and have a staff of only approximately 12 people. We don't expect any significant traffic issues coming back and forth. In fact, I would anticipate, and I think it's reasonable, that the traffic pattern will slow down dramatically from what was the prior use of a fitness facility, because most of the staff will be there for most of the day. There may be two or three, four cars coming periodically for different programs. But in terms of a very high traffic flow, it certainly will be greatly minimized from what it was previously. Obviously, it will have less impact on utilities and water as well. And will allow the two grannies to stay on the road, to adventure into other areas of Cape Cod and promote Lower Cape TV. So we'd ask that we think we meet the requirements for a special permit, and we hope that the board would allow us to move into this and provide some great services to the town and other towns in the Lower Cape.
I think that we will be applying the 10 or 11 customary criteria for granting a special permit for the change of use. I am considering, as the application is to reflect that Section 38 would apply. I think that, I don't have zoning bylaw in front of me, but I think that's the commercial, special findings in the case of commercial uses. Did you speak to that, Mr. Nunnheimer?
As to the commercial use of the property?
Yeah.
Well, Lower Cape TV operates as a nonprofit. They obviously do some fundraising and help other companies with their production and management of media issues. And maybe Teresa can tell us a little bit more about the business aspect of it in terms of the commercial sense, but it's pretty much local programming.
I don't think I meant that. I meant the effort, how whether or not special findings under Section 38 are necessary, because this is, well, it's not residential for commercial use. So is the gym, as a matter of fact.
So we were asked to apply because it was a change in use of a building that was greater than 3,000 square feet?
And all of Unit 5 is that large area of 45,000 square feet in change?
Yes.
Mr. Waugh was on the board in 2006 when Fitness Revolution came in and asked for a change of use. The findings were detailed under the Section 1644. Do you remember that, Mr. Waugh?
You're muted, Mr. Waugh.
George, we can't hear you. Can you unmute, George?
I was about to say that that was a few years ago, and I can say I vaguely recall the application, basically because we were looking for an additional fitness center in town. And to be blunt, I was previously a member of Willies and then was looking forward to what was going to happen. So I can remember it. I'm not sure what the questions are with respect to that.
Well, in any event, the zoning board has looked at that property once before. Does any member of the board have any questions of the application through Mr. Nunnheimer?
I will, the only question I really have, again, is the same thing, that there are a series of requirements that are necessary for a special permit. I was wondering if the applicant is prepared to address each one of those in order.
Let me go to those. I'll pull up the special permit from the zoning.
While he's doing that, could I ask a question of other members? Michael, particularly you?
Yes.
The reason that we are asked to approve this change of use, is it because, I looked at the schedule of uses. Is it because this use is not automatically approved unless a special permit is granted, this particular use, or any change of use? I just wasn't clear about why we're looking at it.
I think so. It has something to do with the area of the unit. And the Building Commissioner has determined that the approval by term, by means of a special permit is appropriate.
Just because it's big, it's over a certain square footage, Tom?
That's pretty much what the zoning bylaw seems to say.
Yeah, 16413, Note 4. Any change of use over 2,500 square feet requires a special permit. I look at this as being an office use. Sometimes, obviously, we don't have everything in our zoning bylaws. And so that's what I determine.
Well, Mr. Nunnheimer, is Lower Cape Television going to, will be initiating original programming at the site, isn't that right?
That's correct.
Good. It's more than your office use, but principally office use. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, that'd be principally office use. There'll be one, one area of a production room, obviously, and there'll be a studio. So those aspects will be available to users.
Does that answer your question, Lynn?
I think so. So I would have interpreted it to be if the use was gonna somehow, the space was going to expand. But what you're talking about, Tom, is just if it's a change of use in a building that has over 2,500 square feet, then it has to be approved.
Correct.
Okay.
The corral area of that, I think, then, would be smaller areas and uses in smaller areas, that is, less than 2,500 square feet. The townspeople have decided that special permitting wasn't necessary, probably because the volume or in the scheme of things, it was improbable that the volume would be sufficient to, that the town should surrender.
So in terms of those conditions under 16444, Mr. Chairman, the site is more than adequate for our current needs and certainly serves the issues that we see as going forward for expansion purposes. And given its location is suitable for our purposes as well. As I said earlier, with respect to the impact on traffic flow and safety, I think we're minimizing any traffic flow that existed with the previous use. So I would be, I think that's a significant positive. With respect to the impact on the neighborhood, again, given that it's in a fairly commercial zone, although, and given that the traffic is going to be convincingly less, I would think it's got less impact on the neighborhood than the prior use. And it will be a fairly unseen use for the most part. And we certainly intend to make use of the whole building and beautify the exterior a little bit to, in view of our uses. With respect to utilities and other public services and water and things like that, I think going from a gym where people are showering and doing what voluminous water usage activities will be subsided in this usage, which will be, you know, again, 12 staff people and occasional people coming in and going out. I don't expect there to be any noise or litter that would emanate beyond the building. And certainly, with respect to groundwater, we won't be doing any activity that's threatening the groundwater.
Any other questions, members of the board? Well, then I ask, is there anyone present who also wishes to speak in favor of this application? No positive response. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Or to comment upon the application in general terms? There's no positive response. Then unless we have questions from members of the board, I'll sort of close the hearing for the taking of evidence and ask for the
Mr. Chairman, I'll move, I'll move if you grant the special permit.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cole. Is there any discussion on the motion? favor, can you hold? We have five members of the board who were designated to hear this.
Are you talking to me?
Yes. Could you?
He said Sarah, I was like, wow.
I realize sometimes I do it myself. And I think probably the nicer way of doing it is to ask you to hold the board, those five members who are designated, as to their vote.
Sure. Ms. Eckold?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Taub?
I was one that wasn't going to vote.
I came on late, sorry about that, Bruce. Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
And Mr. Marnik?
Yes.
The board?
You didn't ask me.
I didn't hear George.
Oh, Mr. Waugh?
Yes.
And I declare the motion carried unanimously, and I will write the opinion. Unless someone has a burning desire to do that. And I didn't ask you, Mr. Nunnheimer, to do a draft.
Thank you very much.
Very well.
Mr. Chairman, if you were asking for a volunteer, I'd be happy to write the
That's fine. I think I'll do this time. And I, I think your voluntary was gracious. Then the only other item of business is the adoption of minutes which have not yet been approved. Stacy provided us with the most recent, a draft for the most recent minutes. That was from the public hearing of September 1st. I think it's in order to approve the minutes.
Mr. Marnik, I have one question.
Yes.
I recall that we had had a discussion in which we, as a board, had indicated we might set aside a meeting to discuss some of the issues that were repeatedly appearing before us as a board. Perhaps I misrecall that.
No, you didn't. Thank you, Mr. Evers.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, Tom. So I'm just inquiring as to that.
We will carry that forward, I think, to another meeting, because it's not a benefit. I still would like to have the benefit of Mr. Ford's general remarks. I haven't been able to encompass them yet.
Mr. Marnik, may I suggest if we have such a meeting that we have a list of items, we have a list of things we want to talk about, so we'd be prepared to do that?
That would be fine. Then I ask the members of the board between now and the next meeting to submit and circulate to all of us their proposed items of concern in briefly stated and composed as issues. And I will pass that on to the board. And we will use that as the structure for our discussion. Any suggestions, any further suggestion as far as that's concerned? Very well, then we still need to proceed to the adoption of any minutes which have yet been filed.
Are we trying to approve the June 2nd meeting minutes?
I think so. Stacy, could you recite a list of the minutes which have not been approved?
Yeah, give me a second. One second here.
Well, she's thinking about that. Do we also have to act tonight on case 2163? I thought they were requesting
No, so just so everybody knows, last Wednesday, I asked the applicant's attorney for an electronic copy of the application, and he told me, he told town council and the Building Commissioner that he was withdrawing it because he's waiting for an updated letter from the Building Commissioner. So I'm glad we're talking about this. They asked, Mr. Marnik, and I said I would ask you. They wanted to know if they could, if we could waive the application fee when they reapply. I said I would ask you to see what you would say, but I said that they would have to pay for the certified letters to be resent out to the butters when they do reapply. So I said I would bring it up tonight, because he just emailed this to me earlier today, and here we are.
I think the formal request for the fee. I mean, it's given a brand new number, so it's a new application. Look, there are times when we modify or we can touch further hearings on an application which has been previously filed, docketed, and, but they're choosing to a different form of relief, and it's given a different number than, I prefer, or you may, subject to any suggestion from you, my colleagues. I think Stacy, I might propose that Stacy, you refer or instruct the applicant that we would request a written request for the waiver of the fee and the reasons for.
Okay, that's fair enough.
Yeah, I know that there's no question that, you know, there must be something different in it, because you're going to have to publish again. You're going to have to, and besides that, you're going to have to notify those people within the protected circumference of owners. So it's a new deal.
There's a few, actually, there's a few people who are butters for the case that are asking me why the letter was withdrawn, and I have no idea. This is what the applicant's attorney told me. I couldn't honestly read the letter. I asked him to resubmit it, because he submitted a picture of it, and I don't have access to the building department's files, because my files are separate. And that's when I was told that they were withdrawing it.
I spoke with Mr. Rivers today when I was at Town Hall, and the executive summary of what happened is that the letter from the Building Commissioner was being reissued with, which would adopt certain suggestions for town council.
Gotcha.
The details of that concern us, and I didn't inquire. Did we, did we adopt the minutes?
From
Independent, oh, I asked you for
Yes, so sorry about that.
What, which minutes to hang in fire?
So there's a few from February, April. April, I owe May 5th, but Lynn is saying that, Lynn, you said I'm missing, what, the 17th and the 3rd of March?
Lynn, you're muted. Lynn, you're muted.
Everybody does it. The 17th of March, no, Stacy, you've got the 17th of March, and we've got it too. So that's fine.
Okay.
The ones, the only ones that are missing that I asked about was February the 3rd, that we haven't gotten anything, and May the 5th, which
And you and I talked about that. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so, but otherwise, everything that, that I have for this year that wasn't done yet, you've sent us.
Okay, so we are voting on minutes from February 17th, March 3rd, March 17th, April 7th, April 21st, May 19th, June 16th, and September 1st.
And June 2nd, right?
And June 2nd, sorry. I'm looking at the other agenda, yes, and June 2nd.
I don't have a specific memory of those minutes, though have I reviewed them recently? But I would like to say something about the minutes of September 1st, if I may.
Very well. Why don't we do, why don't we put a motion to adopt the minutes, and then in the discussion, we'll talk about September 1st. That way, if there's a revision, we can drop that out and we can accept the others. So does that, does that sound
It does, Michael. I think Stacy, there's, I'm sorry, there's one other one, July 21st. You didn't mention, but I think
Yes, we approved those, we approved those at our last meeting.
Oh, yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I know, there's so many. Sorry, guys.
Then, is there a motion to accept the list of minutes recited by Stacy Taylor?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, now, discussion on the motion. Mr. Taub, as to September 1st.
In case number 2162. In Case Number 2160, the minutes toward the end of the first paragraph says, the applicant states they are asking if they can present the case to the board this evening. And I fear that that sounds like they presented the case when, in fact, they were merely trying to, as I recall it, orient us to the case because they thought there were concerns that would arise that we should know about in advance under those circumstances, if I'm correct. I'd like to change the word "present."
That is correct. What if we changed that first, that clause in that sentence that the applicant requested to
Make a preliminary, make a preliminary presentation, if you will.
That's fine.
Okay. I'll change that.
Thank you.
You are welcome.
In the matter of the amendment, all those in favor of the amendment to that sentence in the minutes of September 1st, I guess we have to call the board. Mr. Marnik, hi. Mr. Cole?
Hi.
Mr. Meligan?
Mr. Chairman, a point of clarification. I was not, I recuse myself on that, so I guess I'm going to recuse of the minutes, too. Is that correct?
Very well. Then, Mr. Waugh?
Hi.
Mr. Cole?
Abstain. I wasn't present at the meeting.
And Mr. Taub?
Hi.
Very well. Then the amendment of that sentence carries. And now, on the main motion for the approval of the minutes. Now, I suppose we're doing it in bulk, members, and some of you may have been present at all some of those meetings. Some of you may not have been. So I need four votes. All those in favor of accepting the list of minutes? Mr. Marnik, yes. Mr. Meligan?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
And Mr. Waugh?
I just have one question because the last one I got is June 2nd, and I have some concerns about that. Otherwise, I'm happy with the rest of them, except June 2nd. Then let's withdraw June 2nd, the minutes of June 2nd. We'll talk about it next time, so we can all look at it again. Mr. Cole, otherwise?
So I wasn't present at every meeting. What's the appropriate vote? Abstain? You've got four votes.
I think that you can vote to approve them, as to the ones that, you know, you would have been involved in.
I can tell Lynn's gone through them thoroughly, so I have full confidence, and I vote yes to approve.
This is generally the way
I was out for pressure, Lynn.
Yeah, really.
And Mr. Taub?
I am so impressed by the quality of Stacy's work that I vote yes as well.
Very well. Then, next meeting, we will we'll have minutes for this meeting, and we will review and try to determine whether the minutes of June 2nd, 2021
I would suggest that the members look carefully at the June 2nd meetings. Mainly, clearly, there is a fault in about the fourth paragraph, which is minor. But I'm also concerned about, on page two, the third paragraph, on specifically how we interpret what we do and how it considers the bylaws. There's a few words in here. If the board believes that the property owners have the right to use property as they wish, et cetera, and I think
Point taken.
I think, just I just suggest we look at it closely to find exactly what we think. But that should say, okay, so that's
Especially, especially since the minutes are a more expanded version. Of course, we have decisions, and we write the decision after the hearings. But the minutes are really a record of the handiwork of the zoning board. You might look at that more, or look at the decisions.
And this also was a particular case that addressed, and there was a lot of discussion with Ms. Seeburn, who did write to us afterwards with what I would consider some derogatory remarks. So I think it just becomes something that we should analyze a little bit more closely.
Very well. Stacy, please circulate those minutes again to everyone.
You've got it.
Any further business to come before this meeting?
Move to adjourn.
Very well. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Matt. All those in favor, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you for your good work, members. I appreciate it, and so does the town.